Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectments meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 26th, 2024. We are meeting this evening in the Harry Butters Selectment Chambers, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood, Massachusetts. And the meeting is also being broadcast and for and recorded by Norwood Community Media for broadcast and later recording as well. Before we get into the agenda, as is our tradition, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we have a relatively brief agenda. I don't expect we'll have a long meeting this evening, but we do have some items that require our attention, so we'll get right into it. Item number one for this evening is warrant signature update. What is the pleasure of the board?
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. Second item is meeting minutes for approval of the board. Before I call for a motion, I just wanted to note that I did Ms. Woodward and I spoke earlier today, I had one item of change in the minutes, which Ms. Woodward is going to accommodate. It's item 2.2, that was the description of the Community Preservation Committee 20 Vernon Street presentation from the committee itself. Just a slight correction at the bottom of the narrative there, it has some notes about a vote on a public hearing and that particular meeting was discussion and information, so there was no hearing or vote needed. Other than that, I would entertain a motion to approve with that correction.
I'll make a motion to approve with the correction to item 2.2.
Okay. Mr. Plasko seconds. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Now we're getting into section three, new business. For the first item of on our business agenda for this evening is item 3.1 Moderna TIF agreement amendment for discussion. I will turn this over to Mr. Mazuko for your review and discussion with us, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moderna has a few things that we're just requesting a technical amendment or correction to their TIF agreement, which would be their latest TIF agreement. As the board knows, they've expanded considerably here in Norwood. A few of their plans have changed. Their total investment is still looking to be the same, they're just looking to categorize it slightly differently. They originally planned to be building a standalone clinical manufacturing facility. Their biobanking project, which was not part of the original TIF, ended up being about a $60 million project they didn't anticipate that would not necessarily be included, but that's an example of their plans have just changed and they wanted to come back and see if they could just apply the TIF to what their new plans are, which are roughly the same investment, just being done in a sort of a different fashion. The job numbers are the same or actually even a little bit better from what they're proposing. The process-
When you said job creation.
Job creation, correct. It's just their plans have changed, they're still investing significantly. I think when the last TIF went into effect, we were still in the pandemic, they were still looking at just their pandemic production. Since then, I think there's been the huge electric plant upgrade, there's been the biobanking building. They now have a plan to renovate the mansion and keep it substantially in the same form, but modernize it. So their plans have just changed, totaling around the same investment amount, maybe even a little bit higher, given the cost of construction. And they'd like to know if the board would be interested in agreeing to a technical amendment that would apply the TIF to a different set of plans along the same terms as was agreed to. The board has a few sort of decision points here. The first is, is there any interest in even entertaining the discussion? And if so, traditionally, these would be sent to the Economic Development Commission for their review and for them to come up with a recommendation that then comes back to the board as to whether or not the board would like to move forward.
Questions and comments? Mr. Sad.
I would just see what they're proposing and what numbers they're looking at and then just give it to the Economic Development Board or Steve Costello's Board and get back to us with some numbers.
Mr. Mazuko, so my questions kind of are on the same lines. I'm looking at this, it looks like the usage of the property has changed.
Correct.
But I don't see any information here that the tax incentive-
Same level of incentive.
The same as per the original agreement.
Correct. They're not seeking-
So the incentives remain the same?
The incentives remain the same, they're not seeking anything, any additional. And as a reminder, TIF incentives are only granted when the projects happen, when the construction happens, and based on the actual value. So even if we say, we're going to grant the TIF 25% in the first year on your $100 million in growth, if they only grow $50 million in value, the 25% only applies to that $50 million.
Okay. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Room. That was a question I had, so thank you for answering that, Mr. Mazuko. Just interested in maybe getting some more information on sort of what this shift in their direction means in terms of like, just things like traffic and just because biobanking, I'm not familiar with what it is, but I assume it's probably more in and out than if it were just lab space?
Not necessarily. I actually, so the biobank building, I refer to it as a refrigerator plant, it is far more complicated than that, it actually holds a lot of their DNA samples for their individualized cancer treatments. So it doesn't hold frozen meatballs, but for all intents and purposes, it's a building that holds a lot of biosamples that is largely refrigerated and kept cold. They didn't anticipate having to build that when they started the TIF and then they had some problems with their supplier, so they had to amend their plans quickly to build that. It's a $60 million facility, there's not a heavy job investment there. I think the total employee count is going to be the same as what they proposed before, perhaps a little bit higher, but nothing that would substantially impact traffic. They're up to, I believe, 2,200 employees on site.
Right.
Their full build-out plans wouldn't realistically change.
Okay. That's helpful. Yeah, I think the same questions Mr. Sad had, just getting more information on, just you know, a deeper dive on the numbers, but if on paper, it looks like the investment is similar, you know, I think it's something that having the EDC look at and give us a recommendation I'd be comfortable with.
Comments, questions?
I was just going to point out that on the addendum one, appendix one rather, you see the numbers that show that it's basically the same project as well as exceeded out the jobs, but you also see them referencing a considerable investment in the mansion that was not originally planned. But that does, while that's good news, if people want to see that building restored on, at least on the outside and kept there indefinitely, so it's nice to see that they're going to make that investment, but that has nothing to do with the TIF. The TIF is in Lot 1, this is Lot 1A, so that's not part of the TIF at all. So it's nice information, but it's not involved in what we're discussing.
Correct.
So does that-
No.
Sure. So should we not consider that in terms of the $400 million threshold that we're looking for them to meet or?
So I think that they're meeting the spirit of their investment, whether or not the entire investment is eligible for the TIF, actually just benefits us more, to be honest with you. So if they say, look, we thought we were going to invest $400 million, we're actually investing 410, but 10 billion is outside of the TIF.
Yeah.
You're not going to get the discount on it. And at the end of the day, a TIF on a $6 million investment in the mansion is not-
Not going to be.
On these estimates, they're about $53 million less than they originally intended.
Right.
But they also have exceeded in the job performance. And then overall, as Mr. Mazuko is pointing out, there's going to be more investment in the town.
Right.
And it's actually better for us because it's not in the TIF.
Right. So like, we'll give you a TIF, just build everywhere outside of the TIF.
Yeah, okay. No, thank you. Mr. Sad.
I've never been up here, only once years ago. Is, could we stop maybe a tour with them at somehow, some way, just to see what they're because they just put 400 million on the table for their UTI campus, I believe, right?
That's here in Norwood. They're actually looking to buy their, and that's not, that has nothing to do with the TIF and whatnot.
No, no, I know, but they're complex.
But they're looking to purchase the land from Alexandria Real Estate, who is the, they're a real estate investment trust who owns the land under their properties. Remember Alexandria is technically who bought the Forbes property from us, that we sold it quite the fortune. So we're certainly sad to see a good, a good real estate company leave, but we can arrange a tour for board members.
That'd be good. And maybe we can have like a little tariff on them that maybe one night a year, we could get something for the Historical Commission or somewhere where they have a little wine and cheese reception for the people of town and all.
You mean that the Forbes?
Yeah.
I think they probably opened that, they did tell me that they intend to preserve the library as it is, which is sort of the one remaining interior point. The rest of the building, it was, it's been about six or seven years since I've been in that building, so the HVAC system was questionable then, so it probably needs a lot of work, but I'm sure they'd be able to.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think a visit to the facility also might be of interest up to the Economic Development Council as well.
Yeah, we've done, yeah, we've done a number of tours over the years, there's always, there's a lot of work going on there.
The last time I was there was for the signing of the beam, that's a while back.
All right.
Any more discussion regarding the technical correction for the TIF for Moderna?
Make it official, make a motion to refer to the Economic Development Committee for review and recommendation back to the board.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And we're on to item 3.2. This is Reefs Across America. Everybody has the memorandum for Mr. Ryan. Pardon me while I just get my lined up here. Mr. Ryan is asking us for permission to host the annual Reefs Across America event at Highland Cemetery and the Old Paris Cemetery on Saturday, December 14th, beginning at 12:00 PM. This is an event that has occurred at the cemeteries for the past several years. Does anyone have any questions about it? If not, I entertain a-
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And the next item is item 3.3. This is for a one-day liquor permit, Doom slash The Cove. Submitting an application for a one-day liquor permit for a sip-and-sale event at Doom, The Cove, located at 935 Washington Street on Tuesday, December the 10th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM, with approximately 20 guests expected. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Ms. Groh. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four to one. It's four to one for approval of the one-day license. Item 3.4, disposal of surplus property, the Norwood School Department. For approval to board, committee requests to declare three vehicles as surplus property. Pleasure of the board?
Motion approved. Seconded.
Mr. Plasko, motion to approve. Mr. Sad seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Item 3.5, this is the FY25 liens, Norwood Light/Water submitting a list of water and sewer and light liens for FY25. Mr. Mazuko, would you like to just give an overview of, this is an annual item that we have, if you're welcome to comment on it to give us more background on?
I think you handle the great annually, we vote to place liens for unpaid water and sewer bills, because the board knows we're very lenient when it comes to our lien process. So when bills are in dispute or if there's a meter reading problem, we don't send them to, we don't send them to lien. You'll notice on the list if it says something like no ACTT, skip for account, that means that it's not actually going to lien, they're technically on the list, but until we resolve it, we won't send a lien in for it.
Any questions about the, Mr. Lane? I'll go with you first and I'll go to Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mazuko, there were some significant accounts and not to go into the details of who that was or what businesses, what is our success rate for sort of recouping those?
So we almost always will collect.
Okay.
Because it gets added to the property taxes and we'll get the money. With, where you sometimes see a larger lien on a commercial property, we're a lot more cautious with any commercial abatements or account issues, only because with a residential property, it's rare that a meter fails, but we had an instance, for instance, a year or two ago where somebody had hooked up a high-pressure system or something, caused some sort of a feedback loop, caused their bill to go to $100,000 in a month. That can't happen on a residential property, so we're reasonably certain that it's fairly easy to figure out what happened and we know that it's just an accounting mistake and it's not a real bill. With commercial properties, we have to be a lot more cautious, so sometimes, excuse me, you'll see a larger account, stay on there for a year or two because we're really digging into what the problem is, we're getting third-party investigations of it, that's after our plumbing inspector and our water department have looked at it. Sometimes people are challenging and we're just going through the process with them, where they'll say, you know, there's no way we could have used this. Well, they've got to get an expert and they've got to look at it. But the collection rate at the end of the day is generally pretty good. Sometimes stuff gets tied up in a bankruptcy, but it'll eventually get there, it's just the commercial accounts we have to be a little bit more cautious with than a residential account where we, residential usage, you'd surprise how very regular it is and the average house that their water bill is pretty much the same and the family size is pretty much consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Plasko?
Well, mine was related to that, you know, we have these accounts and we know how it works generally, but some of these this time seem to be extremely large. And I'm wondering, I don't think I did ever ask the question before we get to this point, we do, what collections do we do?
So, before it's going to the-
We don't take anyone to call, we just, we just assume we will collect eventually.
No, because we can place the lien and we know we're eventually going to get it back. So it's different, sometimes unfortunately with like electric accounts, we get screwed and we write off. And remember that unlike electric accounts, your water meter account is supposed to be in the name of the property owner. So if you have a, even though a landlord may submeter or they may want to collect water meter, we know if you own a rental property, your tenants don't pay, the landlord might get screwed, the town's getting its money back, so.
So, do we have, keep a running total on any of these that decide not to pay every year?
Yes.
Could it to a point that there exceeds the value of the property?
I suppose it could happen, but at some point, the property gets sold and we would get the money when the property gets sold. I don't think a water sewer account could, I suppose it's possible, maybe not in this day and age with property prices, but.
Are some of the, some of the records, are they currently litigating against us or opposing the assessment or the?
Oh, people, people challenge their water sewer bill all the time, there's no litigation over it, it's really not. I don't think we've ever had a water sewer bill go to court, other than your handful of the largest customers, it would never be enough to be worth to pay. And at the end of the day, the water gets used, we have to pay for it. There's sometimes a perception that the town or the water department has money that doesn't come from the ratepayers, so if the waters come into our main trunk, we, the system has paid for it, so that just gets whacked up to everyone else. So that's why we're, we're leaning into the lien process, but we're also cautious before we give abatements, because if the water was used, it means the system paid for it.
Okay.
Once we assess the lien, can that still be paid off if you will?
Absolutely.
Without the wait for the property sold?
Absolutely. They absolutely can and usually what happens, some people actually still-
So in some of these large ones, it seems to me we should be doing something rather than relying on the lien, trying to get that cash back.
We can look into it.
It could take us years to get this money.
There's one particular account in there that's large, that is being handled and it's a subject of a, we think we made a mistake and we're being very cautious before we abate a large amount of the number. Because again, with a residential property, it's easier to know if there's a mistake. With commercial properties, it's a little bit more complicated. And we wouldn't want to grant an abatement and say, okay, there's been a mistake made. You know, sometimes what we'll do as an example, if somebody has a water break, we have to charge them for the water, but we may not charge the sewer amount based on, we reasonably know it didn't go into the, into the sewer. It's just the difference between a $60 a month water bill, all of a sudden being $100 a month or $200 a month because of a leaky toilet and it's noticed after a month or two, is different than a commercial property that all of a sudden, they could have used $50,000 worth of water. And we still do generally contact residents when there's a spike in their bill, the system will flag it. I believe you can go online and sign up yourself for your own water usage, but we make a point of contact and people saying, hey, you use $42 a month of water or you use $108 a month of water and it went up $100, is there a problem? And sometimes it's, you know, we watered too much, or sometimes people realize, no, I didn't realize I had a leaky toilet.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Plasko, but that's true, that we did a lawn installation a couple of years ago and that required some long watering and the department did reach out to me about the amount of water that was used at our residence. I'm sorry, Mr. Plasko.
No. I know there are laws, particularly with the electric, about what time of year they can be turned off, service can be turned off or can't be turned off, or if there's a handicap or something, household, so on and so forth. But on these commercial, can some of them be closed?
We can look into it. It's, again, the lien gets placed on the property and it goes to the owner and eventually, if they're paying their taxes, it gets assessed in the following year's tax bill, it gets paid.
I would rather shut them off, if they want to avoid being shut off, they pay. Then they can appeal one if they're right, get a credit, rather than us being the ones taking it on the chin.
We can look into that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
How does it appear on the tax bill? Is it itemized separately from the?
I believe it is, and some folks will actually pay it because then they, I think when you file your taxes, you can make it look like it's part of your solid deduction. You pay interest every month, you don't pay the bill, so I really question for the average single-family home, whether you're actually saving money. I'm not a tax expert, so I can't give you advice whether you are, but you let a bill accrue over time and you're accruing interest on it, but then you're able to write some of that off. I don't know that it realistically works out, but I also can't give tax advice.
Yeah, you know, I think my, my only other curiosity would be in years past, we have a list that, of liens that are going to be added to the real estate bill. I'm curious, is there any information regarding what percent of the list here actually quickly responds to the tax bill filing?
Well, remember, if they don't, if they don't pay their taxes, then eventually the property goes into tax sale and the town could be eligible to take the property. I can tell you there's some properties on there that, they're on there every year, it's just how they choose to pay their water sewer bill.
Okay. Any other questions?
The only one I was thinking about was, as Bill's alluding to, is somebody that has a large bill, it takes, I think, a few years maybe to build up that bill. I think that the water department's got to go down there and pull that meter or do something with it and find out if it's a defective meter, that's, that's a big number. You know, that should be a red flag when it goes up two months after two months, that somebody, the billing department's got to jump on that.
It is and we do, and sometimes they take a long time to investigate, because again, it relates to water, if the water got used or not get used, there's a $100,000 bill, we don't want to just tell a commercial customer, screw you, you used $100,000 worth of water, if they usually use $10,000 a month, so that's why those ones are a lot more complicated because they could have used $100,000. Whereas the average single-family home, somehow $100,000 went to the meter, we know there's a problem there, that's not, that's not-
No, I know, I'm just saying, that's a, that's a big number that we got to jump on that quicker. Because of, I know if I get a bill for $2,000 for a three-family, I pay it, unless it's a stupid one, that'll leak out on the front lawn or something, but.
That sounds like a very high bill for one, two, three-family, you should-
Sometimes you have them. Sometimes they put a stick in the toilet.
Oh, well, yeah, but.
All right.
Any other questions? So the recommended board action is for the board to approve, to forward the lien list to the assessor's and treasurer's office?
Correct.
To be included in the February 2025 tax bill. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve forwarding the lien list to the assessor's and treasurer's office, to be included in the February 2025 tax bill.
Seconded by Ms. Groh. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mazuko. We move on to item 3.6, it's cemetery deeds for signature of the board. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. It's now memorandum time. Item four memorandum, we have four items, including some programming change notification from Verizon and X submitting notification of price changes, we have the Norwood Memorial Airport monthly report. And just a note, we do have several organizations that received a BACH Fund grant from the BACH Fund, as approved by the board several weeks ago, and nice to see that several of the recipients have been kind enough to forward their gratitude and thanks to the board, which I think we do really appreciate. So that's memorandum, do I have a motion?
Motion to file.
Any discussion on the motion? A second, please. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And we move on. Ah ha. Norwood Diamond Club correspondence, 4.5, submitting a letter of gratitude from the Norwood Diamond Club, President Ed Hickey to Mark Ryan, Chris Cassavant, and Charlie Collin for the great maintenance of field for the past baseball season. And that's, I know we just filed, I do apologize, we, it is the fourth item, there's a fifth item under memorandum, we've already filed it, but I wanted to just raise the point that we appreciate Mr. Hickey's reaching out to us for the kind thanks and gratitude to the DPW team for the work that they do on the maintenance of the baseball field. So thank you, Mr. Hickey, for submitting, submitting that on behalf of the Norwood Diamond Club. And now we are moving on to managers' update. Mr. Mazuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just consistent with the short evening tonight, just a couple of items. We do have a meeting next week, December 3rd, we're a little bit off our recent regular schedule it is for the tax rate hearing. December 17th is the board's second meeting for the month. We will likely be having two liquor hearings on that night, follow-ups from, I think it was August or maybe July when we had a couple of vendors in here. And then just a credit to the light department, I don't know if you've seen Washington Street, they have truly outdone themselves this year with, it's the best it's looked in years. It always looks great, but it is out of this world. Gorgeous.
Are there new lights? They did something different.
They put a lot of time and effort into it and really made sure they started early and replaced a lot of lights and added lights where they could, I mean, they really just, they knocked it out of the park this year.
No, I think it was just yesterday, they were up on the common.
Yep, the common's a little bit, a little bit delayed, they want to take care of the street, but it just-
Almost sees a lot, much larger.
Well, yeah, a little bit more complicated, but I mean, they always do a great job, but this year, Washington Street looks the best it has in a long time. It always looks great, but it looks particularly great, so just kudos to the light department and their team for really an outstanding job done.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuko. It is time for selectmen addenda, and I'm going to start on my left with Ms. Groh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So only small updates from me. One is, if you have any more feedback about the goals, be sure to send them to me or if you want to meet up and talk about them, just let me know a time and we can carve out some time together. I know I've gotten some folks already and my plan was to just incorporate those into the document and then we'll be able to look at all that together. And I'll send out another digital copy for folks too, just as, in case anybody lost their physical, so. And then only other thing was just a big thank you and shout out to the light department in addition to their excellent work on the lights. Really impressed with their work on the transmission incident and then also just even local to me, real fast turnaround on fixing an issue with yet another conflict between squirrel and transformer. So they've just done really great work and we really appreciate it, so.
I think the squirrel lost.
Yep, squirrel did lose that one. Yep. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Groh. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Manager, I, I saw an ad that we're looking to hire a new person in the Community Development Department. And while I recognize that that ad is for a part-time person, why are we adding anybody at this time? I'm not sure or don't think I'm personally ready for a hiring freeze. But we're talking about budget problems, we're talking about going for overrides. Why are we adding positions?
That position was grant-funded, so the department received a grant cover.
Yep.
How long a period is the grant good for?
A little over a year. It's one of these grants where we got a certain amount of money that we could either try to contract out or we can hire somebody ten, twelve hours a week for.
The only problem with those is they become full-time, they become permanent. So we have, certainly have to watch and stuff.
We, we will. We historically generally don't like to convert grant positions. We've made it clear that it's, um, grant positions are just that grant. We, again, we looked on doing it on sort of a contract basis. Sometimes you can do it, but then, uh, like our SHS, uh, SHSO, but then you end up billing the contract and then once you're done, you're done. And because it's sort of a community liaison for some of their sustainability and stormwater projects, it's probably, we felt it's better to just have a person.
Uh, and before I forget, I'd like to wish everyone who's watching, everyone in the public, a happy Thanksgiving. Nice holiday week we have coming up. And also coming up, don't forget the Circle Hope and Rumenary Night, Saturday night, uh.
December the seventh.
Thank you. And, uh, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Lane?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just add to Mr. Plasko. Um, this weekend, on Sunday at one o'clock is our holiday extravaganza downtown. Um, it's always a very nice event. Hopefully it's great weather. And, um, I assume we're going to have the, the sleigh rides again and Mr. and Mrs. Claus. Very exciting. So, um, the other thing, and, and Amanda, I'm sorry if I didn't hear, when, were you talking about the outage with the town?
Yeah, the transmission.
Yeah, I, I think, um, if anyone is interested, NCM did a really nice quick hit on with Jason from the light department and he did a really great job explaining the situations. If anyone has a few minutes to watch that. Um, so it's just a nice service that we're able to provide people. And, uh, I was really, I thought Jason did very well with explaining that situation. So, and I'm glad everything worked out. That is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Sadak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the, uh, once again, the NCM. I was just talking to Ronnie before the hearing. Uh, what a great job they do for the town of Owen. The girls', um, field hockey team, Coach Donner and the entire team, congratulations. And MIA is your state champions. Two years in a row, it was kind of taken away by a, a mediocre, um, rule or thumb for the state, MIA. But I want to just congratulate all the girls, the coach, um, bringing Owen to the state champs finals twice, two years in a row. So congratulations. Um, I want to thank, uh, the football team, congratulate them for this, um, Thanksgiving game. It's going to be a wet, uh, day, coach out there, I mean, Coach Manion team, but good luck. Throw the ball if you can. Um, the other thing was, I just want to reach out to, uh, my, my daughter Brianna's here from California. She was hired by Brianna. And, uh, brother Dave and Henry Stanfield, hopefully both recovering and having a safe, uh, Thanksgiving in our hospital. Thank you to everybody in the town of Owen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadak. Um, my, uh, my addenda is relatively brief as well. Well, for me, it's brief. Um, I want to thank the, uh, the DPW for, um, decorating the Morris Hill Veterans, uh, Memorial Park. Um, the park looks great. They've, they've been such a, a great help in, in, uh, producing and helping to make that park a reality. Um, and I, thanks to the Community Preservation Committee also for funding it. Um, so the park itself is, is, is pretty much, uh, on the way to being a hundred percent complete. We are awaiting the installation of some benches along the pathway. Uh, Veteran Stone is, is now there. Um, and I will, uh, be looking to arrange for some kind of formal dedication service at the park, probably in the December timeframe. But if you have a chance, again, the light department, um, did a great job. The, um, the, uh, the lighting of, um, Washington Street now extends right up to Morris Hill, right by the park, looks great. I also want to mention that the community open house for the comprehensive master plan is being held on December the tenth from six PM to eight PM at Memorial, Memorial Library. So this is an opportunity, uh, members of the, um, of the, um, steering committee for the master plan, comprehensive plan will be there. There'll be various stations set about the Simone Room, where people are going to be, have an opportunity to, to learn about the comprehensive plan and also to provide their input and insights into, um, um, what Norwood, their vision, their idea of what, what Norwood will, will become in the, in the next ten years, um, as our plan is a plan for ten years going forward. So some visioning, some information, uh, but primarily I think, uh, we're looking for, uh, folks to come prepared to talk about Norwood and, and, and tell us about their visions and things they'd like to see, things that they want to retain, um, what have you, should be, um, an interesting evening. And also the, our consultant will be there, providing detail on, um, the process for the, um, for the comprehensive plan. Um, I also want to mention that, um, let's see, uh, community, I think that's it. I don't have anything else to say. We did have a middle school building committee meeting yesterday afternoon. That project, Mr. Lane and I are on the committee, is going well. Um, it remains on schedule and, uh, and I, I wrote down on budget, but actually, um, um, the, 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 um, the, um, trend right now is to be on, under budget for that particular project. Um, if you go there now, you'll see that, uh, much of the exterior work, um, is, is getting close to completion. The, the frame is up, the framing walls are up for the concession stand. Uh, over the winter, there's some activity now turned inside the building where the contractors are now, um, are beginning to, um, put walls up and the insights are going to be looking more like a school in, in due time. So, um, uh, but that project continues to, uh, to hum along. The substantial completion date still remains June sixth of two hu, two thousand and twenty-five. So not that far away now.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On that topic that our last meeting, Mr. Lane had brought up about the, uh.
She, um, yeah, the roof screens for the RTUs.
Right. And, um, I just thought was curious to show people that, uh, the existing building does not have any. You just get used to it. It looks fine.
It, 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 it's an interesting conversation. If you are at ground level in front of the new building, you, you will not notice them. You know, and I'm curious as to when, um, um, next year, when the existing Coakley is, is down, um, how that, that building will look from, from, from Washington Street will be of interest is just to see, um, um, what it looks like with, with the rooftop units. So it is a decision that, um, hasn't been made and, um, it probably won't be reconsidered until, I'm assuming sometime next year, if at all, Mr. Lane, if I'm remembering right.
Yeah, just because we don't want any delay in the project.
Yeah. To do it right now would, would be.
My thought would be live with it for a year, see if, see if it really matters.
Save the money.
Yeah.
Make the decision now.
It would require too much.
If I could just object. We haven't seen what the building looks like yet. And some of you may remember, we had to do a small HVAC system.
We can save the building right now.
We had to do a small HVAC adjustment on this building and we had to put up the yellow barriers and we have gotten nothing but constant complaints about it. Former selectwoman, Mrs. Donahue, probably calls me twice a year to remind me it looks terrible. So while I agree we have time, we should wait. We didn't have it. And I don't know that we could have gone screening up here, but we get a lot of complaints about it.
Did they tell you they were going to put up the old barriers?
I, codes have changed, so what, the old building.
Because that doesn't show in the plans either. Was that a change?
Well, I don't, maybe it is. I don't know that they are, but we're going to want to see the final product because, uh, where we've done it in the past and haven't had them, we continue to hear about it.
Well, that, that, if Mrs. Donahue is, is watching this evening, that might be a reminder to her to, uh, give you another phone call to talk about it.
That's her right now.
So you, there you go. Um, I don't have anything else. Oh, I just, just did want to make one note on, on the comprehensive plan. Uh, last night we did meet and one of the things that, uh, Mr. Lane had mentioned about, uh, NCM and the light department, um, Sarah Dixon, uh, planning director, as well as Shannon Greenwell, who is the chair of the comprehensive plan steering committee, are, um, uh, you'll, you'll see a video on NCM with a, an interview with, um, Sarah and Shannon coming up. Another opportunity to learn a little more about the comprehensive plan going forward. So that's the end of my addenda. Is there anything else? If Mr. Sadak?
I think for the people that don't want to go sit in the rain on Thursday morning in Dedham, I think it's on NCM, so you might want to just tune in.
Yes. But Mr. Hickey won't be doing the play-by-play.
He'll be selling flowers.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Groh. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your day. Bye-bye.